Katati City Council and the successor agency to the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, June 23, 2020 at 7:00 PM. If we can please have a roll call, please. Councilmember Delalso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Skilman?
Here.
Okay, thank you for the roll call. We'll move on to item three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I would please ask everybody, join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item four, approval of minutes from our regular city council meeting on June 9.
I'll move to approve. This is Councilmember Delalso.
I will second. This is Councilmember Harvey.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote? Councilmember Delalso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll move on to item five, which is our announcements. We have meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members leave are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at katatitcity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Katati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888777. It is our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service, and we will continue to offer all city services. However, in the current interest, sorry, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based, as well as appointments by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions, 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. And like always, we'd love to hear from you. So please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info, I-N-F-O, at katatitcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixel, and Nextdoor. Now we'll move on to item six, approval of the final agenda. I'll check in with our city manager, Damian Obed, and see are there any changes to tonight's agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. There's no proposed changes tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. So I'll move on to item seven, and then I promise I will stop talking. So, okay, at least. Okay, citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take actions on any items not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So now I'll turn it over to our city clerk to check in with our attendees. Thank you, Mayor Skilman. And just to add to our attendees tonight, to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer or dial *9 if you're just using your telephone. Please listen carefully for the mayor or myself to address you by name or phone number and for the audibles and notifications that you've been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will begin. And Mayor Skilman, looks like Marjorie Crump Shears, please go ahead.
Hello. I addressed you at the last meeting with the poem, and I come back with another and a request. Do not be dismayed by the brokenness of the world. All things break, and all things can be mended, not with time, as they say, but with intention. So go. Love intentionally, extravagantly, unconditionally. The broken world waits in the darkness for the light that is you. That is by L.R. Knoest, K-N-O-S-T. The light that is us. We know that in July at some point there will be a city council public meeting to talk about issues that we're all concerned about. My plea today is that some of us in our community have the privilege of working with you to plan that open forum. I, for one, would be very interested. I know that there are others. I welcome the invitation and the challenge. Thank you.
Okay, Lauren Barnes, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I would like to second what Marjorie said. I would certainly be very interested in helping the city and participating to help plan that town hall. Also, I'd like to say, last meeting when I came and spoke, I got the distinct impression that, you know, we have maybe concerns about the police use of force policies, but that overall, our police force doesn't have those sorts of use-of-force complaint issues that we see in other communities. And I was sort of under that impression. And then, when the Press Democrat article came out about the lawsuit against the City of Katati, and I saw the video of the police officers slamming somebody into the ground, I realized that, oh, we really do, it really is urgent for us to take a look at these things because we do have those problems here. And so the three priorities that I have for us to change going forward is that we review the use-of-force policy and maybe take a look at using a hybrid model where we start with what Lexipol provides to us, and then we, in an inclusive and open way, we modify those, that policy as a starting point, but then build in the things that are important and the values we care about here. Second, I'd like to, us to be able to rethink which sorts of phone calls and 911 calls are handled by the police, and maybe some of the budget could be diverted to funding social workers or other types of first responders who could help in different situations. And last, I would really like to see some sort of citizens oversight board created to review use-of-force complaints involving the police. I know based on our policy manual, I don't know what's, maybe there's something different done that I'm not aware of, but just by the letter of the policy manual, it looks like there are no civilians involved in the oversight of any complaints about the use of force by police. And I think for transparency, we really should change that. So I hope that you'll involve us in planning this upcoming town hall, and I hope I can work with you and help somehow to make positive changes. Thank you.
Mayor Skilman, that is all for raised hands for this time. Sorry, couldn't unmute myself fast enough. Okay, and then just to double check with the public, this is also the time for comments on the consent calendar. So seeing no hands for that either. Lauren? I have one new one. Will Proudie, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. I was having a hard time getting in the meeting. I'd just like to say that, like my fellow citizens, I want to call for a review of the use-of-force policies and our police policies in general. I'd like to see us move away from just using Lexipol and conduct a review. So I want to make sure that before the budget is adopted, we budget some money to do a thorough review of the policies and make some time for that. And I'd also like to see the Police Advisory Commission that's in our city bylaws reinstated. Thanks, that's it. You have more time?
Okay, Mayor Skilman, back to you. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll close citizens' comment, our citizens' business and public comment for the consent calendar. And we'll move on to consent calendar, which is item eight. We have items A, B, and C.
Does Councilmember Harvey move to approve?
This is Councilmember Landman. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we please get a roll call vote on that? Councilmember Delalso?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll move on to item nine, direction on future agenda items. I will check in with my fellow city council members and see if anybody has anything they wanted to put on a future agenda. Okay, I'm not seeing any raised hands, so I think we're good for this week. So thank you. We'll move on from item nine and move to item 10, public hearings. And first, we have item A, resolution to approve the engineering's report for the landscape and lighting assessment district. And I believe I am turning over to Craig Scott.
Okay. Mayor, members of the council, this is Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Tonight's item is the annual levying of assessments for the 10 landscape and lighting zones that are within the single City of Katati Landscape and Lighting Assessment District. So according, this procedure follows the provisions of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, and it's to recover maintenance costs and costs for lighting, sort of fixtures and so forth, that are above and beyond what's normally in the subdivision, and so that the city has a means of covering the cost to maintain those items. The Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 prescribes for an engineer's report to be prepared and filed with the city in order to levy and collect these assessments on any following fiscal year. Annually, the city council directs the city engineer, myself, to prepare and file the engineer's report on the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District to establish assessment zone rates. Once the preliminary engineer's report has been filed, the city council can then adopt a resolution of intention to levy and collect annual assessments for fiscal year 2021, and then preliminarily approves and files annual engineer's report and sets the time and date of the public protest hearing. And so that's where we are now with the public hearing, to consider adopting the final report and then assessing that, levying the assessments. The engineer's report outlines the proposed budget assessments, improvements, and changes to the zones within the assessment district. And so that's largely what we'll be talking about tonight are these budgets for the 10 zones. And then we'll go from there. I don't know, okay. I see, there's a delay. This is my first time advancing slides, so bear with me. Okay, so I covered this first slide here, except for the fact, the information there about, we used to have 10 different districts, but now we have, back a few years ago, to simplify things, not really to reduce the amount of effort in terms of the detail of the budgets or so forth, but just simplify the process. We combined the 10 districts into one district with 10 zones. So that means that we can now do this with one resolution instead of 10. Okay, so these are the 10 assessment zones. They're listed there. The last four, Zone 7, 8, 9, and 10, when they were formed, they were allowed to have an annual inflation adjustment applied to their rates. Zones 1 through 6 did not. So they are, the rates there, stay where they are unless there's a majority of the property owners in that zone that agree to impose a higher rate on themselves. Here's the figure that's in the report that shows where all of the zones are. Okay, so the zones have landscaping, you know, street frontages that are landscapes. There's trees and plants and irrigation, mulching that has to be done, there's tree trimming that has to be done, sort of under the routine order of things. And then, so what I've pulled out here in this slide is sort of non-routine efforts. So in Summers, which is there off of, opposite the Oliver Shopping Center on La Salle, Public Works crews mulched the area and trimmed the trees that were dropping branches. So that's not typically an annual activity. And then Oak Knoll, that's just down the street here from City Hall and Christiansen Court. There's an island there. Public Works crews mulched the planter strip. And then, there was a tree that was splitting, an oak tree on the island, and that had to be removed. On Garden Gate, that's the, that Keystone Way, there's a fallen tree, and that had, that's the picture there, being depicted of the tree being trimmed up. And then, there's other trees that were needing to be trimmed. Then in Zone 9, Centera Way, the city actually took over the landscaping contract from the HOA and started to do direct management of the landscaping of the park in the streetscape along Centera Way. And the number of landscape improvements done in the last year were included tree trimming, the treatment of diseased trees. There's a pair of blight, there's aerated the turf to ensure a healthy turf there at the park with mulch, repaired the irrigation, and went ahead and listened, you know, we listened to our irrigation specialist and horticulture person there, and were able to achieve quite a lot of water savings. Okay, so looking at the, these are the assessments imposed for each of the zones. And so they've got the 19, the fiscal year 1920 assessment stays the same for Zones 1 through 6. And so the proposed 2021 assessment per lot is listed on their right column. And then, again, for Zones 7, 8, 9, and 10, those ones do have an annual inflation adjustment. And so it's increasing, for example, for Garden Gate, from $212.40 per lot to $224.50 per lot. And the current maximum annual assessment is calculated based on the assessment that, on the inception of the zone to the current, to January 1, 2020, based on the San Francisco CCI. And so that's put out there, enlisted, and kept track of because so long as the engineer's report proposes, adjusts assessments half or below that maximum, we do not have to have a vote of the, you know, majority approval of the property owners. And you can see the proposed 2021 assessment is, many times, well below the maximum assessment that we're allowed to do. And then if, you know, there's a number, you know, a dozen, two dozen, there's a range of properties within each of these zones, and so you add up those individual assessments, and this is, this chart or this table shows the total assessment for each of the zones. Okay, and then what we do like to do, of course, to manage the budget, is to track the reserves that we have in each of the zones. And sometimes this is kind of difficult to interpret because of the relative amount of the reserves. So that last column shows what the percent changes from year to year, and then the slash, the fault in the second number after the slash is the percent of the reserves to the annual revenue. And the purpose of the reserves is to even out the undulation of the expenses. You'll, as I mentioned before, there are sometimes capital projects or unusual expenses, fallen trees that need to be taken care of, or irrigation repairs that could cost a lot more than just annual maintenance. So the reserve balance, you know, is there to smooth out those undulations. So you can see for Zone 3, for example, 3 and 4, and 5, those reserves, you know, look, appear to be healthy because of the percentage to the annual revenue, but that could be one mishap, one, you know, the replacement of the irrigation system. Or if there's a tree that dies and needs to be removed, that could pretty much wipe out those reserves. And then Quail Hollow is a special case because at $30 a year per lot, it's really not collecting enough revenue to, for even annual maintenance. The irrigation bill of $900 a year is, you know, it's the majority just by itself of those revenues. And then you get down below, and the revenues are healthy. And I just wanted to point out, Oak Knoll, Zone 6, Garden Gate, Zone 8, I mean 7, and the ultimate acres, you can see that the healthy reserves, you've got 625% of the annual revenue, 464% and 580%. And so we would look at those zones for landscape improvements. Just take a look at, are there plants that are getting old and need to be replaced, irrigation systems that can be repaired? Those do have reserves that support those types of improvements. Okay, so these are the zones focusing in on the ones that have inflation adjustments. And there's nothing really new with this table. It just kind of focuses on those four zones. You can see the multiplier there is- You can see the multiplier there is what I had explained before. It's from the zone inception, which, for Park Meadows, was formed in October nineteen ninety-nine, to January first, twenty twenty, taking that inflation adjustment, and that's a factor of one point six three seven, multiplied by that original assessment. This is more as an illustrative purpose, to explain how we get those calculations. Okay, so remember the slide previously, I mentioned that three zones had pretty healthy reserves? So this slide just kind of illustrates the thought process staff goes through to see how we could make some landscape improvements to those zones. So Oak Knoll is the one on Christiansen Court, and this picture was taken before we mulched it. Right now, those are mulched, but it could still benefit from plantings in there. And then Garden Gate is one on the Keysto Way, and there's, that's the middle photograph there, and you can see there's some bare dirt, so there could be some replantings there, some mulching. And then Altman Acres has that last picture in its opposite. Hunter's Ridge subdivision on Old Redwood Highway, it's easy, it's easiest to recognize it because that's where the feedback sign is on that side, but that whole streetscape there, including the sidewalk, is the responsibility of the Altman Acres, Zone Ten. So we do have a contractor come in and do the, approve the hedge trimming of all of those, but there's some bare dirt there, and maybe some of those plants could be replanted and then mulched as well. So you could dip into the reserves to do those improvements. Okay, so, Quail Hollow, as I mentioned, is a special case because of all, out of all of the zones, it has a systemic budget deficiency. And so every year, we pull from the general fund to, you know, make the budget, balance the budget. And so what I, on the second column there, just shows the last three years of the general fund loan amount, and we can see it's dropping. I don't want to get anybody's hopes up. Looking unlikely at any point to break even, because it's pulling in like one thousand two hundred and forty dollars a year, and the water bill, just to water those plants, is about nine hundred dollars a year, so. But it, I mean, it is positive in that it is, the loan amount is dropping every year. One takeaway is that the landscaping there along Myrtle is a big improvement to a streetscape that is, you know, enjoyed by many people in the city and people traveling through the city. So there's kind of a citywide benefit to keeping that landscaping looking nice, well-maintained. There are a couple of redwood trees on Geary Way, and they're pushing up the sidewalk, and staff has been looking at that for a couple of years now to see what the solution is to that. Obviously, the zone budget cannot support those costs, but we would be looking at having the general fund pay for the removal of the redwood trees and the repair of those sidewalks there, as budget allows. Okay, that wraps up the presentation. Here's the recommendation, which is to approve the annual engineers' report confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and levying and collection of annual assessments for the City of Patati Landscape and Lighting Assessment District for zones one to, one through ten, pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scott, for the presentation. And first, I will bring it back to council, see if there are any questions for staff. I see Councilmember Lammon has his hand up, so go ahead, Councilmember Lammon.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Yeah, Mr. Scott, thank you for the report, very clear. I wanted to ask about Christiansen Court, I believe that's Zone Six. Definitely, I like the idea of using some of the reserve to replant. I think that would be a great idea. Anything we can do to make, continue to help this thing look even better, I think is a great direction to go. But I wonder if we could take just a slightly deeper look before we just buy some new plants and put them in, to take a look and see why they continue to fail. And I say this because we've done this a few times in that area. We, some years back, at least five, six years ago, there was a question from people living there, why the plants, considering they paid into a reserve from, weren't holding up. And so we replaced those plants. We checked to make sure that their watering system was working, and yet those plants died within a year or so. This has happened several times, since, and every time staff looks into it, it appears to the best of our knowledge that the watering system is working, and yet these plants continue to die, and I do see it regularly because I walk by this. So it's always made me scratch my head why we're not able to maintain something, seeing as the public pays for it. So I think there's something missing in the loop, and I wonder if we could take a look at that. I know it's an extra step, but I think it would be good because it'll save the city sometime in expense in the future if we don't have to keep going through this process. So I wanted just to ask for that. And just a quick comment, since I'm talking, as far as Quail Hill, I recognize the difficulty of that. Perhaps we just have to accept that zone as an ongoing reminder of the best practices in the future, always making sure we have rolling costs for these sorts of things. Because we all agree, Myrtle Avenue is a major street in Patati, and we do want it to look good, and this is probably not an unreasonable price for us to pick up to continue having it look that way. Just a thought. So thank you for the presentation, and if you could look into that before we proceed with replanting in Christiansen, I would be appreciative. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I also see Councilmember Harvey has her hand up, so go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Well, Mark actually mentioned some of the comment I wanted to make on Myrtle. I mean, that Quail Hollow has been a problem for us, and I agree with your comment on, you know, what we know in the future, what we've learned, which is also, I think, why we don't really do these landscaping districts anymore, because what may seem reasonable, you know, thirty years ago, becomes unreasonable in the future, especially if there is no way to increase that amount. And I also agree with you that it is an important street into our community, and so we know how bad it looked a few years ago when we reinvested money into it. And I agree that unless there's a way to get those properties to help us, that it's imperative that we keep that street looking nice. But thank you for the report. And Mayor, when we're done with public comment and everything, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay, thank you. And I am not seeing anybody else on the council with their hands up, so I will ask Lauren to help us open it up for public comment, to see if anybody wants to comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead. Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
I can't, please go ahead, thank you.
Oh, good, good. This is all new information, and I'm glad to have it. I live on Mattery Circle. In which of these zones does Mattery Circle fit? And are we up to date?
And you can't normally, yeah, sorry, I was just going to explain, we can't normally do it back and forth, but we can definitely check in with staff.
Okay, I'll give my email, it's okay, somebody can get back to me.
Sure, we already have it.
Oh, okay, yep, you do.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Mayor Skilman said we'll do it for raised hands.
Okay, and Lauren, just to cover all of our bases, I saw a couple of new people join in. Could you just review if they're calling in, what they need to do to raise their hands?
Yes, of course. For any more new attendees, just use the raised hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or dial star nine if you're just using your telephone.
Okay, and seeing no raised hands, thank you for that, Lauren. I will bring it back to council, see if there's any more comments. I'm not seeing any hands raised by councilmembers, so we'll pass it back, I believe, to Councilmember Harvey.
All right, with that, I will make a motion that we approve the engineers' report, confirm the assessment diagram and annual assessment amounts, and levy and collection of annual assessments for the Patati Landscaping and Lighting Assessment Districts one through seven, for fiscal year twenty and, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two.
This is Councilmember Deloso, I will be glad to second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on this item. Can we please get a roll call vote, Lauren?
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to item ten B, establishing outstanding backflow testing. And I believe, is this also Mr. Scott?
Yeah, yes, Mayor members of the council, Craig Scott, again, Public Works Director, City Engineer. This item, like the prior item, is also an annual procedure resulting in assessing, levying the assessment of charges. And this time, it's for customers that have backflow devices and chose to have the city do the annual certification as per state law of their backflow devices to make sure that they're operating correctly, but then have not paid the city's invoice for those services. So let me just back up a little bit. There are customers in the water distribution system that have backflows, and those are required for customers that have pools. Mainly, though, it's for non-residential customers, because their irrigation systems and some industrial users have potential, you know, potential for backflowing into or contaminating our system. So every year, the city sends out a letter providing an option to these customers to either have the certification done, you know, hire a contractor to do the certification and send that certification in, or for the city to provide that service to them and then invoice them. And so we have a list of customers that chose that second option and have not paid the invoice, and so this is our means of recuperating our costs. And we're looking at, in this case, I did not count them up, but they're in the resolution, it looks like, like three or four dozen, just round numbers. And so the charge is a hundred and one dollars. The charge when we use our contract, when the city is, goes ahead and takes care of it, we have a person that we hired to do that, and the charge, which is set in that contract, is sixty-six dollars. So the hundred and one dollars includes a thirty-five, thirty-five dollar admin charge. And the recommendation here is to adopt the resolution included in the packet, and the resolution of the City of Council, the City of Patati, ordering the establishment of outstanding backflow testing charges and penalties from the fiscal year nineteen twenty, and directing levying of the assessments. And so the levying of assessments would be for the twenty twenty-one year, but for charges that incurred in nineteen twenty. And this item also requires a, a public hearing. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it first to council. It looks like Councilmember Harvey has her hand up, so go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Mr. Scott, it seems like there's a lot more than usual. Usually, we have had less than that, or is that just my imagination, that it just seems like the list on this is longer than normal? I was wondering if there was any kind of special circumstance where, for some reason, people were not taking care of this item as usual?
I really wish I had the numbers, you know, to, they're easily accessible of what, how many we've had each year, but that is my impression too, that this is a longer list by double, at least.
Yeah.
That we usually get. And I don't, I don't have an explanation for that.
Okay, so just, people have just ignored our requests, so it's not like we got any feedback where there's any kind of, because of what we're all going through, inability to take care of this, that people aren't available to take care of it, or any extenuating circumstance that you're aware of?
As I've mentioned, many of these are businesses, and the timing of this may have happened right about when the shelter in place was happening, and, you know, many of the businesses were told to close down, you know, to apply by the health order. So that is, that's my guess, I, because it just seems like the timing of the SIP. Actually, I, the engineering department does not administer this program, so it probably isn't helpful for me to speculate. I don't know if Angela Corr, the director, would like to weigh in on this.
I can provide some feedback. So we, we did send out the letters for normal, and those do go out at the beginning of July, and those, and letting people know that they need to prepare their system for backflow testing. Here's our certified testers that have business licenses for the city, and we push that out to all the citizens, that it's applicable for their system. And I'm not sure why we would have more this year. We did have, I think, not so much the COVID-19 related, but maybe the P S P S timeframe was when, because the deadline is, I believe, September thirtieth is when they need to have the reports back to us completed, so that we can get our reports off to the state, because if they don't do it by that timeframe, we have to send out our tester to make sure it gets done. That's who these people are. We had We had to send out our, um, person that we have contracted with to do this service for them, so we can have a hundred percent compliance, um, and that security with our system, that it's being properly maintained, and we don't have that infiltration from the backflow. I, I can compare and see who we had last year, but maybe it is really that PSPS was the timeframe, was not COVID-related, because this would have been before that.
Okay, so may, maybe, um, that PSPS happened, and maybe they forgot about it. That's a possibility, I guess.
That's, that's the only possibility I could think of.
Right.
Related to the emergencies we had going on around the city.
Right. But this is all the way now in June, so there's been plenty of time to remedy that situation. So, thank you, thank you, that was really great information, to know that it was due way back in September.
Okay, and I see, um, John Moore also has, Vice Mayor Moore has his hand up, so go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Skoman. Um, Craig or Angela, if you can, um, and looking at the, uh, section seven with the, the parcels listed on there, parcel number two-eight-six dash oh-two-two, seven-hundred-and-seventy-one-dollar charge, is that, what, what kind of business is that?
I don't know if I'm allowed to disclose exactly which business it is.
Oh, well, well.
It is a significant business in the city limit. It has multiple devices, so there's three devices at the business that need to be tested.
Oh, okay, um, because it, it seems to me as if that is, um, a parcel that we've seen on previous years over and over and over again?
Yeah, it, it is the Lowe's, holding.
Okay. Um, okay, uh, thank you very much. That was all, I was curious what that was about, why it was such a high figure versus some of the other ones? Thank you.
Okay, and I'm not seeing any more hands up from council, um, so I will go ahead and open this up for public comment, and, uh, Lauren, please let me know if anybody's interested in commenting on this item.
Okay, if an attendee would like to comment, please just raise your hand via the icon on your desktop or smart device, or dial star nine if you're using just your telephone. And I see no hands raised.
Okay, thank you for checking, so then I will go ahead and close public comment, and bring it back to council, see if there's any further comments or a motion.
I'd be happy to make a motion if you would like.
I do not see any other hands up, so go ahead, thank you, Councilmember Harvey.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion that we receive all oral protest to the amount of the fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty backflow testing and approve a resolution establishing the outstanding backflow testing charges and directing the levying of assessments on the fiscal year twenty twenty-one property tax rules.
I second that, it's Councilmember Deloza.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and can we please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Deloza.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamond.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skoman.
Yes. Okay, thank you, so now we will move on to item ten C, consideration of objections to report sewer charges. And I believe this will also, is this also Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Craig Scott, once again. And this is the third, uh, we bundled these items together, um, and this time, instead of backflows, this item is addressing a single property owner that has not paid their sewer bill. And so the city also has the recourse, when this happens, to collect, uh, the, the due amounts through, um, assessing a levy on, on the property rolls for, to collect that money. So, the, this, this one customer, like everybody else, has been invoiced throughout the year, and, uh, just has not paid that invoice, or that, um, the, the water, or the sewer bill. I believe this is a sewer-only account. Where what happens is, there's a ten percent penalty on the outstanding amount, and then there's a five, um, it's written there, a five percent, half, half a percent interest on the total balance for each month it's delinquent. And so that penalty amount is a hundred, a hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents. That, I believe, the lake fees is, is less than twenty-five dollars, so we're looking at about a hundred and thirty-five dollar amount of penalties on that, on the amount of those seven hundred and, roughly seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars that we will be putting on the property rolls, uh, or, or requesting that we can levy. So the recommendation here is to conduct a public hearing, and then follow that with the adoption of the resolution approving itemized report of sewer charges and penalties outstanding and directing levy, levying of assessment on the fiscal year twenty twenty-one property tax rules. And that, that concludes the short presentation, and I'll be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Scott, and, um, it looks like I have a hand up for, uh, Councilmember Harvey, so go ahead.
Well, I guess the good news on this one is that, um, we now have this down to one. Um, apparently, even having a penalty and interest hasn't been enough, um, incentive, I guess, to get this one, um, customer to move forward, but, um, I'm glad to see that this one's gone down, because it seemed to me that this one used, this list used to be larger. So I'm glad to see we're getting there, if we could only get this one moving in the right direction, that would be awesome, but, um, thank you for your presentation on that.
Okay, and, um, I'm not seeing any other hands up from council members with questions, uh, so at this point, I'll open it up for a public comment. And, uh, Lauren, if you could check and see if anybody's got public comment on this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor Skoman. At this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay, so with that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. I see Councilmember Lamond has his hand up, so go ahead, please, Councilmember Lamond.
Thank you, uh, if there are no other comments from my colleagues, I'd like to make a motion, having received no oral or written protests to the amount of fiscal year nineteen twenty sewer charges, I'd move a resolution approving the itemized report of sewer charges and penalties outstanding and directing levying of assessment on fiscal year twenty twenty-one property tax rules.
I would second that emotion, this is Councilmember Harvey.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, Lauren, if you could please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Deloza.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamond.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skoman.
Yes. Okay, thank you, and with that, we will move on to our regular agenda, um, which is item eleven A. And for that, I believe I'm turning it over to Angela Corr. Angela, I see the presentation, but you're still muted.
Uh, better, there we go.
There you go, perfect.
Good evening, mayors, councilmember, and members of the public. Tonight, we're requesting the adoption of the City of Cattati budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And as you all know, we, uh, this evening, we want to present to you a summary of what went on to create this budget, or, or the strategic plan for the next fiscal year, as well as provide some summary and information on what went into creating this budget. This budget is a, this budget process is a full-year-long process, as laid out on packet page one sixteen. And our process really starts out with the evaluation of where we are and what those strategic objectives are. And we started that back on March twenty-sixth, where we hosted the strategic planning session. Then following that strategic planning session on April nineteenth, we evaluated the draft budgets for the enterprise funds, as well as the internal service funds. And then on May fourteenth, we also evaluated the general funds, as well as the special revenue and the capital projects funds. During that strategic planning session on March twenty-sixth, which I highly recommend anyone going back and re-watching it, since we did a lot of information about the economic downturn, what was happening with our estimates on revenues, what our outlook looked like, and how we were going to continue to, to strategically plan for our budget going forward, um, we really committed ourselves, the council was dedicated to committing to community, infrastructure, and our economic development priorities. Now, this was all really pre-long-term shelter in place was in fact, in effect. But even with this economic, um, volatility, the staff has continued to focus on these objectives while planning this budget. Now, as dated previously, since March seventeenth, due to the COVID-19 emergency, we've had additional layers of criteria that we've had to assess. The shelter in place order created a significant amount of revenue uncertainty for the last quarter of our fiscal year nineteen twenty, and we're still expecting a decrease through our first half of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Overall, for cities, for the State of California, sales tax and TO2 is really the largest affected revenue source. Sales tax, which is our city's, uh, most significant inflow of resources, is, uh, set to decrease primarily due to the temporary closures of businesses related to the, um, PG&E shutdown of services during the PSPS, as well as during this COVID-19 emergency. And on top of that, the governor's deferral program, which allowed businesses to extend their, um, tax receipts payments for sixty days. The second-largest revenue source for the city is our property taxes, and we've continued to evaluate those revenues, and we really see them as steady for the next fiscal year. So for our general fund revenues, a little bit deeper dive, we're going to continue deepening, uh, evaluating these and reporting back on them. But we want to make sure that our estimates that are going into our budget continue to be conservative assumptions based on the foundation from our sales tax audit team, when they provide us an assessment of what sales taxes we should expect to receive, as well as any deficiencies in the sales taxes that should have been reported to the state. They can identify businesses that perhaps missed a tax payment or have a significant decrease in a period of time, so that we can make sure we are adjusting accordingly. And we, again, are committed to regular checks, check-ins with council, with the community, to ensure that these estimated revenues we have within this budget are on track with those actuals. Our general fund expenses, um, are, we're gonna be dedicated to, um, meeting that required reserve. We want to make sure we have a prudent fund balance above that required reserve in order to continue our operations to the community. We are going to continue to prioritize the existing level of services to our community, and we're, we're planning to delay some of the capital projects that we have on hand, that we were focused on previously before the COVID-19 emergency. But again, we are still committed to that infrastructure project, and so we want to reassess as we continue to evaluate those revenue paths as we go forward. The largest fund for the city is the general funds. This is really where all the community funds and our strategic economic development comes in. Overall, revenues for the city are estimated here, and you can see it on packet pages one seventy to one seventy-two. So as I stated previously, sales tax for the city is by far our largest revenue source, where Bradley Burns one percent tax makes up a budget of two-point-one million, and then Measure G one percent makes up to two-point-two million, for a combined total of four-point-three million, due to just sales tax within the city. So the current sales tax rate for the city is nine-point-two-five percent of that, the city only receives two percent. And half of that is due to the voter-approved Measure G tax. You can see more information about this on packet page one seventy-four. But then additionally, on packet page one seventy-six, I would point out that we are anticipating a significant decline, um, in nineteen twenty due to, again, the PG&E outage, the COVID-19 emergency, as well as the sales tax deferrals that were provided by the governor. We do anticipate a slow recovery over the next five years, and due to the sunset of Measure G in twenty twenty-three, we're making sure that we're strategically planning on how we're going to continue to move forward. So here's that other additional layer of evaluation that has gone into the budget this year. And so we've worked hand-in-hand with our tax consultants to evaluate the taxes that we have coming in, and up to date, we've only received the sales tax from, I believe, so we, we have yet to receive the sales tax that was submitted in April. So we're in June, we're at the end of June, and we don't know what sales tax were in April. And so with that delay in our receipts for the submittals to the state, we want to make sure we're doing the prudent, uh, service to our community and budgeting accordingly, and being conservative on our estimates for those revenues, but being also diligent in knowing what should be planned for as actual receipts that should come in. So in the first quarter of twenty twenty, um, it did perform better than the estimates uh, from HDL that, what they gave us back at the very beginning of our strategic planning sessions, and that was really due to that countywide pool. We talked about it before, where this is, those internet sales, due to that Wayfair binding, um, we're getting significantly more money in through the sales tax through that countywide pools, and it's offsetting some of that local sales tax revenue. And over a hundred and forty thousand dollars of the first quarter of missing payments occurred from both sales tax and Measure G. We are anticipating to receive some of those monies back in the next fiscal year. So even though we're showing them as a decline in this year, because as far as cash flows goes, we're not going to see that money in this fiscal year, we are anticipating to, to receive some of those back in the next fiscal year. Again, in order to be prudent, we're not estimating that we're going to receive a hundred percent, because the state is not guaranteeing receipt of a hundred percent, but we are budgeting that we are going to receive some of those back. So for our next largest, uh, revenue type is our property taxes. So for every dollar submitted by the county for property taxes, the City of Cattati really only gets eleven cents. So on packet page one seventy-three, it really provides a good summary of how this one-point-eight-million-estimated property tax is, uh, calculated, how it comes in to the city. And so that eleven cents comes back into the general fund in order to support the city operations, such as public works projects, maintenance, tree trimming, et cetera. On packet page one seventy-six, uh, we also provide a summary of the comparable property taxes over the last three fiscal years, plus estimate moving forward. Now that's where some of our major in- Now, that's where some of our major inflows. We want to talk about for the general fund, what are some of those operating expenditure highlights? So really, what is driving the expenditures for the operating funds for a general fund? And the majority of those expenditures are related to the personnel costs, the contract services and insurance, as well as a few others that will go on in the next few slides. So within our personnel costs, we are including all salary and benefit changes that were in the MOU. Again, this is really poning in on, we want to make sure we have that continuity of service. We are providing the community the level of service that they deserve and that we are here to provide. We're also including that full lump sum payment to CalPERS for our unfunded liability. And this lump sum payment, though it's two hundred eight, sorry, excuse me, though it's eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, it ends up saving the city over twenty-eight thousand dollars for the year. Additionally, the contract services and insurance, though those costs are allocated across all city departments, we did see a significant increase in just even our insurance, which was twenty-six percent increase. We are continuing to dedicate ourselves to cleaner and better energy. And that was with the decision last year during this budget season or the last year's budget season to move to Evergreen electricity across all city operations. So that's been in full effect for a full year. And additionally with that, we also engaged with a utility audit firm, and we are also continuing to look at other savings that we have. And so we have also identified potential savings of around six hundred, sorry, six thousand five hundred dollars per year for just doing an energy audit. Again, with being safe and focused on our communities, we're going to continue the glyphosate free landscaping program where we will not use that in any of our parks and maintenance. But we're still evaluating what that change is going to mean to additional labor and and costs around the city as we learn how to do these tasks in a different manner. We're going to continue to dispatch for Sonoma State University. This is our twenty-four seven dispatch dispatch operations that where we support them. And we are also continuing to fund the internal service funds for future expenses. And those are primarily a hundred and fifty thousand to vehicle maintenance and replacement funds as well as a hundred and twenty-six thousand to the compensated absences fund. So here's a brief summary that's included on packet page, I did not include the packet page. Excuse me. One seventy eight. We're just showing a comparative estimate to budget on where we are for each one of the departments within the general fund. And again, this assumes that the MOU agreements that are in place are still moving forward. And it also includes a big piece of it is that our FTE, so all the employees that are included in the estimate are those who are just in place at this point in time, whereas the proposed budget includes the staffing for the full staffing for any vacancies that are in place or ready to be filled. This also has that increased in allocated costs, which was again primarily that insurance, legal and utility. And it includes the one-time costs that we have for our economic development work, our emergency operations preparedness, as well as our election costs. So another part of our budget is to make sure we're being prudent for our future, and that's having a balanced budget. This is our twelve-plus years of having a balanced budget. This just means that our our revenues or our inflows are greater than our operating expenditures. So just wanted to make sure that we are still keeping an eye on this and making sure that our revenue streams are in line and that we're expanding it to meet the needs of our community. Along with having the prudent revenue streams and maintaining our operating expenditures, we also want to plan for our future by making sure we have not just the required reserves, but a prudent reserve. For the budget year nineteen twenty, we proposed that a budget would have an ending fund balance of four point eight million. But due to our prudent budgeting efforts, we are estimating a higher fund balance of approximately five point two million. For the next fiscal year twenty twenty one, we are exceeding the required twenty-five percent reserve to an estimated sixty-two percent reserve of approximately four point seven million. Within that reserve, we also have these general fund transfers. These are other sources as well as other uses that are from the general fund. The primary transfer in is for the public safety grants. So these are special revenue funds that come in specifically for our public safety issue department to support the services of the public safety. The majority of the uses are the transfers out from the general fund. And these fund our capital projects, our grants, as well as our CDBG. So again, these are all of our capital projects related. Some of the grants for this fiscal year are actually related to SV two and our economic development program as well. So I just wanted to touch on this, and this is included in packet pages one ninety eight to two oh one. There really is no significant changes to our special revenue funds from our budget study sessions. But I wanted to point out how the different departments within the general fund actually put on different hats and also support our special revenue funds. These are funds that are established by government to ensure that a certain revenue sources are used for a specific purpose. We are seeing some of the special revenue funds, such as MTC Street and Measure M Parks, which are both derived from sales tax, as well as gas tax, which is derived from gas sales, are expected to decrease due to the COVID nineteen emergency, and so we're adjusting accordingly for those. Additionally, we have certain funds that are also directly related to development projects. And again, in a best prudent budgeting effort, we make sure that we're only budgeting for those developments that are actually programmed as well as slated, like they're ready to break ground. And so we can really know that that money is going to come in so it can be used for those special sources. Moving on for our capital projects. So our biggest effort in this fiscal year for the budget going forward was to evaluate our capital projects. In order to make sure we are doing the most prudent manner of prudent budgeting, we separated our budgets or projects into A projects and B projects. So all the water sewer enterprise projects are continued to schedule, continued planned, excuse me, sorry, are planning to move forward as scheduled. However, the general fund revenue with its uncertainty at this point in time, we're postponing any projects that were not strategically allocated for this fund, were not supported by grants, or were not considered safety, or were not already in place when the budget process started. So those budget A projects, again, were the projects that were grant funded, have a high impact or relatively low cost, were really time critical, like they, we were already bid out and had work programmed and it was already happening. Those other projects that were, that did not fit this criteria were moved into a type B project. And these were projects that are still critical, they're still a part of our program, they're still something we are dedicated to move forward. But we will continue to assess our revenue and our reserves and reassess throughout the next fiscal year when can we can we program them into our budget. So some of the projects that made it onto the A project list are the citywide traffic safety program, the flooded ranch building, the city hall complex refurbishment, the civic center generator, weight riding pedestrian and bicycle path, the Cattati park improvements, as well as the school street pathway. So that left the E projects, which was mainly the street paving project, which is again pending that actual revenue verification. So on to the enterprise funds. This last group of funds are the water and sewer resource and infrastructure funds. So from our budget study sessions, really nothing has changed. We're still meeting the thirty-three percent operating reserve requirement. However, during this time, we want to just emphasize what strides we've made to make services even more easily accessible to our customers. And a part of that has been creating the uploading the twenty-four seven access by phone. So now you can easily pay your bill by phone at any time by dialing eight three three two eight two oh eight two five. This has made it really accessible for those who still don't have internet access or don't have easy access to a computer or don't know how to register an account. As long as you know your address, you can get the payment made and not have to worry about any shut offs or being late. We also have moved to having access for online shut off services. So if you can get onto your account online, you can schedule a shut off. And this is great for our city who has a lot of student turnover. We can then help them better schedule that when they can turn off their service and get their final payments made. So we're going to continue to dedicate to improving these systems as well as our process for communications. Also during, I did want to touch on that during the last study sessions, we did also go over our financial update for our fee study. And we found out that the rates that we adopted with resolution two thousand seventeen dash four seven were deemed appropriate and will be in place for the next fiscal year. And that's been accounted for with the revenues that are included within the budget. Lastly, those water and sewer capital projects that we deemed as necessarily, these are really our A projects because they are related to our water and sewer infrastructure. We're going to continue to budget for this data system update and relocation. We're going to create that AMI collector in L section as well as the well one A and three treatment facility rehab, the William and Olaf sewer replacement, as well as the sewer manhole INI program to identify any infiltration into the sewer lines. So in conclusion, the proposed fiscal year twenty 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 one budget really continues to prioritize community, our infrastructure and our economic development, even if it's in a little bit slightly different manner due to the COVID nineteen emergency and the recession and our adjustments in revenues. We're going to continue to make sure our balance, our budget is balanced and sustainable. Where our operating expenditures do not exceed the conservatively estimated operating revenues, we want to remain fiscally prudent. We want the general fund reserves protected at sixty-two percent to meet that or exceed that by the time we get to the end of fiscal year twenty twenty one. And again, city staff are really committed to exercising prudence and integrity in the management of public funds and to provide transparency and accountability for all its uses. I think that is, I'll go ahead and turn it to you for questions.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. And I will first bring it back to council, see if there are any questions about the budget. It's like we've got council member Delasso, so go ahead with your question, Councilmember Delasso.
Thank you very much, Mayor Skilman, I appreciate it. Angela, I just want to start off by saying, not only was that a great and comprehensive presentation, but the budget is not only a comprehensive document, there is a lot of detail in there, but it's presented in such a way, in my mind, and and I'm someone who understands budgets from, you know, having done them for so many years, that it's very understandable for the layperson. I think the narratives that you have in there are really good and really important. But there's just one question I have for you, and I think I did hear this in your presentation, but I just want to double check. What will be the regularity of this upcoming fiscal year of having a check in from you basically to verify revenues and where we are based on on what's estimated? I mean, I think it was done in a very tactful way. The conservative revenue figures is definitely the right approach because we would hope it would only get better from what was proposed in the budget. So I just wanted to check in with you on that and if you have a plan, is it, you know, is it a quarterly thing, is it a monthly check in? I'm just curious.
So for a formal check in, we will absolutely have the report out at mid-year where that's where we would do any significant requests to council for any budget adjustments or revisions at that point in time based on where we are. As far as informal feedback that we would do, I I would think that would be a part of city managers' reports that we would include that as we go forward, hopefully on a quarterly basis. We do have aspirations of creating a quarterly financial report. But with staffing and timing, because as soon as we're done with budget, we move right into fiscal year end. You guys know how much I love my caper. So we absolutely want to keep it ongoing on an informal basis where we report out at the council meetings, at least quarterly.
Okay, no, I think I think that's very fair. And again, you know, to me, this is the right approach to take. And I have to admit, although I never said this to any staff people, but probably about a month or a month and a half ago, I had a real concern about our budget. Looking at a number of cities, even right here in Sonoma County, who are not filling positions, actually letting people go, having incredibly large deficits. And we were impacted as well here in Cattati. But I think, you know, a lot of those, a lot of the cities, you know, were hurt with the lack of TOT and so on. But I think that I'm feeling better about this, not super comfortable. I know we're still going to take a hit throughout this next fiscal year. And this is kind of a longer lasting economic impact that we're going to feel from the COVID nineteen. And let's just hope this fire season is minimal and that we will get through that. So again, for now, that's it for my questions. I certainly want, do you want to hear from the public and my other colleagues? But thank you very much for the presentation. It was very well done.
Okay, thank you. And I've got a hand up for Councilmember Harvey. So go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Hi, yes, Angela, thank you so much for the presentation. And I will express my gratitude for the kindness of the budget, the way it's displayed. I think it's easy, as Councilmember Delasso pointed out, for the layperson to understand. So I really appreciate that. I'm in the same camp as Councilmember Delasso. I'm used to looking at budgets, so, you know, more spreadsheet-ish type budgets I'm used to. But I think putting it in lay terms, I think, is really helpful for people to understand. And I'm glad that you also went over a lot of the other funds and things. Because I think people seem to focus a lot on the general fund, but there are a lot of other funds. And oftentimes, people don't really understand that a lot of the funds are very restricted. We can only spend them on certain things. So I appreciate all you did to explain that. I would also concur that, given the situation, I would like, even if it's informal, I would really like us to have pretty regular updates. I mean, quarterly, I guess, is okay, but it seems like this this is like shifting sand. And we're not sure exactly where the revenues are. And I would hate for us to kind of be heading in a in a spiral and not really. And I would hate for us to kind of be heading in a, in a spiral and not really know about it. So the earlier, the better on that. I also concur, having just spent some time with some cities with ABAG and with the North Bay Division, we are actually in better shape than a lot of the cities that are very dependent upon TOT. To hear some of these cities that have lost all of their tourism and they are like, you know, 80, 90% dependent upon that, it's pretty draconian, some of the things that they're having to do. So it's good that we are not that dependent. It is also good that we continue moving forward to try and balance what our revenues are. It's never very good to be dependent on, you know, one sole source of revenue. So I'm glad we continue to kind of move forward on that. And I'm also glad that thus far, as long as things stay the way they are, that we have been able to manage by keeping the operations the way they are and giving up on the capital projects, although I'm very disappointed that we have to possibly forego some of the street improvements this year, considering we have made such tremendous progress on, on kind of moving that forward. I can't remember the numbers, probably Councilmember Lamb will remember better than I, the improvements that we've made on the pavement index. But I think we've made strides and it's unfortunate. I guess one question that I would have is, have we completely lost that window for doing pavement projects this year, given the uncertainty of our revenue? What would be kind of the drop dead, if you will, date that we would have to know whether we have revenue for those or not? But thank you for the presentation. And that's all I have right now.
Hi, Angela, this is Damian. I can just jump in real quick on that last question. So Councilmember Harvey, the plan on paving right now is we have, we have a scaled down project that we are putting out to bid here right before the Fourth of July holiday. And that's going to be all the named streets and the first part of Al Parizo between West Sierra and Catati Creek. And it was sized to hopefully get us in that sweet spot where we think with a favorable bidding environment, we might be able to move that part of the overall project forward. So, you know, by the time those bids come back in late July, we'll, we'll know more about our revenue. I mean, for example, we'll know the April actuals on sales tax, and that's probably going to be the worst month. So it'll, you know, we'll be a lot, a lot more informed at that point, and then we can make an informed decision about whether it's a, it's a good time to move forward with that project or if we want to hold off. If, if we do hold off, we'd be holding off until the spring. If we do move forward on it, we could move forward on it before the winter. We still have time for that. And then the remainder of the project, which is West Sierra Avenue and La Plaza, would, would get postponed until next year. And potentially, if there's infrastructure grants that come along, they'd be ready to go, take advantage of that potentially as well. So that's, that's, that's the plan. And the named streets specifically were chosen not only to fit kind of in the sweet spot from a cost perspective, but also because of the, the COVID reopening, the need to do, you know, the masking and social distancing, the businesses around La Plaza and the councils at recent action to, to allow businesses to expand their retail operations into the sidewalk or potentially parking places. We just didn't feel it was a good year to rip up all the streets around La Plaza, given the probably acute need, at least this summer and this fall, to have that space still be available and not under construction. So, sorry, long answer, but that's, that's where things are with that.
Well, thank, thankful for that. Hopefully, I will keep my fingers crossed that things look good. And it is worth noting, as you, as you mentioned, that, you know, some things are coming in lower than expected because of all that's gone on too. So maybe we can keep our fingers crossed and maybe that would maybe happen on this too. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for that information. And I see Vice Mayor Moore has his hand up, so please go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore.
Hey, Mayor Skilman. Angela, thank you for that presentation. And Damian, thank you for the clarification on there. I did have a couple of questions regarding the A capital projects versus the B capital projects. I see that the pavings are primarily the most expensive. And then we've got, of course, our Falletti Ranch that we're in the middle of, so obviously we can't, don't want to pull out in the middle of that, so to speak. But I'm looking at the City Hall complex refurbishments and then the replacement of the roof and the solar panels on the City Hall complex. How imperative is it that that be done in this particular policy year versus moving that forward? Because, you know, that's $400,000.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll get that for you, John. So the, the main, the main time critical element there is the roof of that, of the Civic Center. The roof is a, it's a built up roof. It's been there for a long time. And it, it has continual leaking problems and it, you know, we definitely want to try to get it replaced before the wet season again. So that's the, that's the main thing. You know, I think as we, as we go along, we can reassess if there's other improvements that are, are time critical. But we left significantly, significantly enough budget there to make sure that the roof could be taken care of before the winter. To the extent that there could be any extra, depends on what the bids come in at. But if there are, then there might be other things like, you know, painting the trim, for example, needs to be done, and some other things like that. So it's just, it's just the degree of aging that we need to take care of sooner rather than later.
Okay, so there is currently leaking at that facility?
Yeah, there is. Every, it seems like every winter, I think, public works up their patching roof.
Okay. And is that a tarn gravel roof?
It's a, a flat membrane roof.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much for the clarification on that. And that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any other hands up for council members. So we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. And so Lauren, if you can check and see who's interested in commenting on this item. Thank you. Oh, and I will also acknowledge that we got a written comment as well via email. So we have that as well in the record.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Skilman. Marjorie Crumcheers, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, good. I have a, I have a question, and you may have actually answered it. I really appreciate as, as a resident, more frequent reviews of where the city is with regard to budget. But, and my question relates to that, and that is, what happens? What do you do? What's the process when you realize that something major needs to change within one of the city budgets? What's the, what's the process around that? I can take that answer now or somebody can refer me to something that I can read. Once you accept the budget, but then it needs to be changed, what, how does that happen?
All right. Adrian Lawby, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. I would say too, it was very comprehensible, and I know that's really difficult. I'm here to make trouble. You all have gone through a really extensive detailed problem, problem solving and budget process, which has been transparent. You've invited citizens in to comment. I know, I've been through it a few years and, and the worst thing is when someone comes at the very last minute and says, no, wait. But that's what I'm here for because it is 2020 and we have a pandemic and we also have a Black Lives Matter movement. And the attention to the Catati Police Department is unusual and important. So as you know, we, we believe anyway, the group that I've been working with, that police account for 26% of the operating budget, but they're 54% of the general fund. And I think as, as the accountant spoke of, the general fund is really the, the place where we have some leeway. Most of the other funds, I understand, are designated for certain particular purposes. So 54% is very large of that money. And I understand that there are good reasons for that in terms of being a small city, we have to have 24-hour, seven-day-a-week. That's, that's heavy on the staff and police people are expensive staff because of their training. And I understand also that we have trouble keeping good police officers because our employment is not, our salaries are not that high. So on the other hand, I think that BR is small city and the number of calls that people get that do not require someone who is highly trained in use of force, who has the option to arrest people, I would imagine is the largest number of, of calls that we get from our dispatcher. So I think it's really time to look at the police department budget and do some auditing in general of their policies and their, their past, what, what's really going on there. But also consider taking some of their disfunding from the police department and putting it into more, maybe some social workers, other professionals, other people who might take some of the burden off the police and keep the citizens safe, as safe or more safe. So I'm asking you to consider this seriously. Perhaps there's some way you can approve this budget with that caveat. I think you all know that you did all approve that we should all come back and talk about this sooner rather than later. So, you know, it's already on our table and I would hate to see this budget approved tonight without any reference to all of this work we're all going to be doing together. Thank you.
Shaheen Patman?
Hi, thank you. To kind of piggyback on what Ms. Lawby just mentioned regarding the budget and the amount of allocations and expenditures regarding the police department, you know, when we talk about reform, you know, Ms. Lawby brought up some really great points. The point I'd like to kind of discuss is to know just how much the city of Catati or the Catati Police Department pays either annually or monthly, I'm not sure how it works, for the Lexapro contract? And how much the city would actually save if that contract was not removed? You know, this for-profit police policy shop, you know, their boilerplate tempo, boilerplate templates don't speak to the needs of the Catati community. And I feel that the funds saved from ending this contract could be used to, you know, improve community programs such as, you know, helping individuals with disabilities, senior citizens, unsheltered individuals, or, you know, it could be used for some of the programs that were mentioned tonight that aren't going to be funded like street paving and various other infrastructure development. So I hope that as the council goes through, you know, the budget and kind of weighs these decisions that they take into consideration, you know, what the community wants and the services and programs that make or will make Catati a safer, richer place. And look at how that can be done by minimizing some of these kind of extrapolating costs by the for-profit policy template, rather than the Catati police actually creating a policy that's shaped by the input from both them, the council, and of course, the citizens of Catati. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Lori Aldrich?
Hi. Okay, I want to piggyback on Shannon's comment. The police budget has gone up from last year by 7%. It is not going down, even though the general fund has gone down, the revenues have gone down. So you're even increasing this when there's less revenues. So it's not really, and with all this talk about reform, you're not, it's not in the budget. And generally, because you keep talking about lay interpretation of this budget, okay, it is very selfish by the budget for the city staff. There are no cuts to any staff. They're all paid. They're all, all their benefits, everything is the same and increasing. They went up something like 6% over last year as far as expenses. But where, what they made optional is streets of, and they're putting off like a million dollars worth of street repairs. So like here, us on the west side, we were supposed to get next 2022 or something, we're supposed to get this, the street money for that year. Well, now it'll be another year. And we already have roads that are at zero to 20, they're already failing here over on the west side, but now it be delayed and who knows, it may, so it's not, they're not being very honest and they're not saying what they're doing the trade-offs for to keep their salaries. They're not saying their seniors, senior muddies, there's, we don't have senior citizens, we don't have these things in Catati, we've never had them, and we're going to keep giving it to the police department. And so we really need to go in detail of how to shift money around here because it's going to the police department for, and there's what, as Chief Parish said last meeting, there's one to two officers in, on duty at one time usually. And we're paying 54% of our budget for one to two officers to be on. It's just not fair to us citizens to keep, keep this budget as it is. And I hope you don't adopt it and you come up with practical solutions to the problems that are presented in today's age. Thank you.
Miranda London?
Hello. I mean, first of all, I really appreciate the, the going over the budget and kind of explaining that in layman's terms so that we can understand, you know, what's going on. And personally, I just feel incredibly grateful to be part of Catati where, you know, like what people are saying, you know, our police budget is going up by about 7% as compared to other cities that are going up by a lot more. And in that being said, listening to Shaheen and the other commentators' opinions, they seem really valid to me. And I think I'm just kind of confused, where that 54% in the police budget, where is that going? Specifically, like where is that money going? And what is the training that they're going through look like? And, and who holds the police accountable? I mean, I'm hearing about all of these laws that are getting enacted in, in other places and it's so inspiring, but my fear is that the laws don't mean anything if, if the people enforcing them aren't being held accountable. So I'm just kind of curious where in our city, who is holding, who's holding each other accountable? Who's checking each other? Who's balancing each other? And, and I really just want to kind of reiterate too, that, I mean, firstly, like I'm, I don't hate the police, I don't, I don't want to abolish them. hate the police, I don't want to abolish them and get rid of them, and I feel incredibly grateful to them and their service, and that I don't have a fear of them personally, but, you know, Black Lives Matter is a really important movement, and I want to know kind of, again, what Shaheen was saying about what can we do for this community and what can we do to make each other feel safe and wanted and validated. But mainly, I'm just kind of curious, where does that budget specifically go to? And what can we do to hold each other accountable? And what can we do maybe to lift those burdens off of the police? Because if there are so many officers that are getting called on calls that they're maybe not needed for, then that's not really fair to them either. So what can we do as an individual, as a society, as a city, or whatever, but what can we do for each other? Sorry, I'm kind of nervous speaking, I'm scared, but I just, yeah, those are my questions.
I'm going to be, now, how do I unmute? Do I leave? Lori Ann Barber.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I want to, this is Lori Ann Barber from Khatati, and I want to kind of second what Adrian said. I, well, I guess I'll start like everybody else did and say, really awesome presentation and, you know, very interesting and well put together. But I think that the timing is just a little awkward after the last city council meeting and the council members all agreeing to take a look at what's going on with the police and what's appropriate in Khatati. And now, you know, two weeks later, here's the budget, and then the discussion about it coming afterwards. So it seems a little awkward. So I just really want to second what Adrian said, she said it well, and I don't need to say it again. Second thing, and I don't know anything about this, so I might be speaking, and it might not make any sense, but I noticed that one of the expenditures was for a generator, and I understand the need for backup power and all of that, and I think it's a good idea. And I certainly appreciated the City of Khatati providing power during the last PSPs, when we could all have a little community and charge up our stuff. But I also want to say that the climate crisis is with us, and I'm hoping that the city is always keeping in mind lowering our GHGs whenever possible. So I don't really know what that generator is about, but if there's a way to do something electrified instead of gasified, then I think that's something that should be looked into. And that's it for me tonight, thank you.
Will Proudie.
Hello. Angela, thank you for the presentation. I do appreciate you taking the time to make the budget understandable to someone who doesn't have as much experience with it. I have issue with trying to delve into the police budget on a line-by-line item. It's not really clear what's going for what, and I don't think that that's your fault, but I do think we need to take a closer look at this. I know the budget is proposed to be increased. I'd prefer to see the increase going towards more de-escalation training, and as I stated earlier, perhaps paying legal counsel to reexamine the policies in use in lieu of hiring a new officer and purchasing a new police cruiser. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Mayor Skilman, back to you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your public comments. Excuse me. With that, I'll close public comment on this item and bring it back to council and staff. I see Vice Mayor Moore has his hand up, so go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. There's a couple of things I thought I would comment on this. If we go back to looking at the different budgets, the perception and the working relationship that I approach this with is that the budget right now is a placeholder, and we have things in there, and if something comes up and we need to make changes, we can always come back to the city council and with approval of the city council, make changes from one particular area of expenditure to another area of expenditure as necessary, especially in light of emergency situations. So we're always kind of looking at those things, and as you may recollect, I believe Mayor Lammon even talked about, or Councilmember Lammon even talked about, the frequency of which coming back to the council to discuss things and as things come up, and if the need arises to make changes, we certainly can predicated on what the particular issue is. So my feeling is, is even though we may adopt a budget like this, it's much like Newsom's budget, Governor Newsom's budget, where we've got it in place, and if we need to, we can make changes down the road. Secondly, if I wanted to address Mr. Pamatmat's comments regarding Lexi-Pole, we are in a shared insurance pool with 15 other cities here in Northern California and soon to be multiple other cities where we share resources. One of those resources is the ability to gather information and adopt some of the policies through Lexi-Pole, so that we don't have outstanding cost on that particular item since it's a shared pool expense. So that kind of helps in that regard versus having to pay specifically or to hire a particular consultant or to have individual personnel hours drafting those policies. As the Lexi-Pole does have professional legal analysis on some of those, as we talked about at the previous city council meeting. So in that regard, it helps to keep our costs down regarding some of those contracts through the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. There was one other comment that we don't have senior citizens here in Khatati. I think that that was just a misinterpretation on that. And then regarding who's holding each other accountable, as council members, we all hold each other accountable. When we have disagreements, we talk about that, we go to the sources of the department heads, who's creating the budget, what are the items there for? And so that's where we have those discussions and who holds who accountable in particular situations, because, you know, we are elected by the community, and we are accountable to our constituents. And of course, we're all residents of the community, so we want to do the best that we can and make Khatati the best as possible. The generator question I'll leave to the engineers. I would love to see us go to purely a solar battery backup, but I don't know how practical that is in an emergency situation, weather permitting. And those are just some of the clarifications I think I wanted to add to that so that there was an understanding of, I think, where many of us are coming from on this. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Moore. I see Councilmember Harvey also has her hand up, so please go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
I think Councilmember Lammon was first, but I'll go ahead. So there was a question about the process. So the process is, this is just the budget that gets set. If any of the particular items require more funding, then the process is that that department head will bring that back to the council. So we always have the opportunity to change things as need be. And if you check lots of our items throughout the year, there are oftentimes things that have to change for various reasons. So the process is that it comes back to us. I want to talk a little bit about, because a couple of people mentioned, you know, that 54% of the general fund budget is for the police. I want to remind people that the police can, are only budgeted out of the general fund. So it's not 54% of our whole budget. So for instance, many others that our staff are accounted for in the other funds, in particular, the enterprise funds. So it's not, it's just that one fund. So to look at all the staff, there is, and Angela probably knows what page it's on, I remember seeing it, there is a line-for-line itemization of who gets funded out of what budget. And so some folks are funded out of multiple budgets. So unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, the police department is only funded out of the general fund. So it does make it look like it's a bigger portion. That's not uncommon. Some of the general guidelines for police and fire, just generally speaking, even the, one of the consultants that's highly recommended at the state level, Michael Coleman, he says that a typical general fund budget for police and fire, for general fund, is 73% of a budget. So we don't obviously have fire, so 54% is not out of bounds. I looked at many of the other cities, and we are very much in line based upon those. Let's see, so that's that. I think a lot of the points about the policies, I think that that is really good information, and I think that's why we want to have this continuing conversation about updating our policies. And by updating our policies, I think that that will help with, as pointed out, what training we need, where we want to spend money on that, to have the policies, obviously, if you have a policy, you want to have training, that supports that. So I think that those are good comments, and I think that we need to keep those in mind when we have our community meeting on what changes we might make to those policies. I've heard a couple of folks talk about, you know, maybe using a hybrid model of starting with the baseline of the Lexi-Pole and maybe modifying where needed. And some of that stuff will drive that. There was concern, I know someone said, about putting funding in the budget for that meeting. I don't think that that's necessary. We, you know, have meetings, and we don't need a special budget to have that meeting. And I think the generator question, I like the idea, Vice Mayor Moore, of the possibility of solar and battery backup, but I agree with you. The whole purpose for having a generator, it can't be electric-oriented, because that's why we would have it, is because electricity is out. So, but I do like the possibility of having solar and battery backup, if that's not cost prohibitive. So I do hope people will stay engaged with the whole item around the police policy, and so please stay involved with that. And I think that's it for me right now.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Harvey. And I see Councilmember Lammon has his hand up, so please go ahead, Councilmember Lammon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just in general, I want to start off by thanking this quarter for the presentation on the budget, very thorough, very meticulous, very well designed. Most important to me, it's prudent, as it should be, especially in what are really uncertain times. I think that's the right way to approach it. So I just wanted to touch on a few questions, like some of my colleagues have, because I think we got some really good questions and some good input tonight. One of the first that struck my mind was, how do we handle changes, especially if they might be significant ones, in a budget? And typically, there'd be two ways probably of approaching that. One would be through the process, as was described tonight, that we typically use, beginning earlier in the year with a set of three meetings that leads to this fourth and final meeting. That's a very good process for doing these things, a little difficult, though, for things that are late-breaking or emergent. And the other way, as my colleague Vice Mayor Moore rather aptly described, amending a budget. We can certainly do that. So passing a budget is probably the prudent thing to do tonight, but again, it is placeholder, it's a living document that has the chance to move as need be. So I hope everybody will keep that in mind. I'm interested, too, in the discussion about Lexi-Pole, what its cost to us is, what flexibility we might have or might not have with it. But I do think part of that discussion has to be the potential lack or loss of legal best practice status it gives us, although it is an outside agency, and a lot of us tend to look askance at that. They also do have police procedures that have held the tests of being challenged up to this date. What they don't have currently is something that recognizes the new best practices that are emerging right now, in this year that we're looking at. But I'm interested to see if they start moving there, and I suspect we'll see that rapidly. It'd be very disappointing if we didn't, at least. I love the question, who's accountable? Bottom line, yeah, we are, as your council. We're citizen representatives, we're responsible for oversight for all the staff that work in the city. But it's a good question, because I agree, I think one of the real questions we need to talk about when we come back to talk about all these questions is, how is our oversight set up? Is it ideal? Does it meet the needs of the 21st century? I think there's some room to talk about that, certainly, so I'm interested in that discussion as well. And where does the budget go? The bottom, easy question there is, it's just about all salary. There's not a lot, it's not paying for a lot of toys or extras, particularly for a city our size. That's having a police department. We're roughly 26%, 27%, I think, of our full budget. We're Santa Rosa, I read the paper, I believe it was a little above a third, so I think we're in a fairly comfortable place with that. But that's the thing. So that leads me to the question I'd ask everybody in the public who's, has an undeniable interest in this, something for us to all think about in the next week, few weeks. What do we want in the police force? Do we truly want two people on duty? Because this city, at least a few years ago, certainly did, and went to the mat to make sure we had that, because the only other option was dropping down to only having essentially one person on duty, potentially contract with sheriff's office. And although I've heard many good things about individual sheriff's officers, I'm looking at recent news of the sheriffs, the way the sheriff has dealt with the COVID response, and the way the Sheriff's Employees Union has responded to Black Lives Matter, and I kind of do like also having local control. I think that's something we all enjoy to a degree. So I would ask people to think about those questions, because that's where I suspect it will come down to. If we want to have people on duty to provide social services, that might mean not having an officer. What happens if we can't have that bare minimum, two on duty, 24/7? That's a question, as a community, we have to decide. Let's see. And I guess the last thing probably that I wanted to mention, oh, yes, the generator. Definitely, certainly designed for multi-day PSP events, not certainly something we want to use. We share the horror of, in the 21st century, considering having to use a gas-fired or a diesel-fired generator. But having said that, for a PSP event, it's important that, number one, your city keeps running, and number two, we're able to provide emergency charging, which will be challenging with COVID, but still trying to do that for people with legitimate needs for charging of medical devices and communication devices they depend on. And I just leave everybody with this thought, I think the community is showing its commitment to GHG reduction by paying for Evergreen. There's an extra cost for that, but we see the long-term value in it, so that's where this city's at. So thank you for the input, I look forward to talking more about this in the future. I'm supportive of the budget as it stands tonight, but as always, open to talking about, seeing if it's meeting our needs, whether it's next year or next month. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. And I see Councilmember Deloso also has his hand up, so please go ahead, Councilmember Deloso.
Thank you very much, Mayor Skilman. Great discussion this evening, I applaud the public, I was going to say for showing up, but I guess for showing up electronically and giving us your opinions and comments. I, too, am very comfortable with the budget as presented, and it's for a variety of reasons. But at the same time, this next month, we will be having, and hopefully there's some more information that'll be coming out on that shortly, but we'll be having this study session. on that shortly, but we'll be having this study session on the topic of, uh, the police use of force and, and a little bit broader topic, but related specifically to the police department. But this budget document, which is an annual document that is put together by staff based on council's direction, um, when it comes to strategic planning, this is what I would always refer to as an annual implementation of our strategic planning. We know that there's hurdles that can come, uh, in front of us and, and we do have to sidestep and make changes to an adopted budget. Um, we were kind of overwhelmed by this, it seems like most recently with certainly the, uh, power shut-off, the power safety power shut-off, fires back in the fall, um, the Black Lives Matter movement. Um, I, I think there's just been a number of things, and that little COVID thing as well. There's been so many things that have impacted not only planning a budget, but implementing it too. So, um, so that's what this is. To me, this is an implementation plan of our strategic planning. And, you know, we still have a vision in place and that's something we're not going to lose. But I, I want to say just a couple of other things. I can read my notes from different sources. I wrote things down. Um, I certainly have had some discussions with some citizens in the last two weeks since our last city council meeting, um, about, you know, the, um, the use of force issues in, in broader terms. And, um, you know, we heard from our chief, and you heard from the city council members, I believe, all of us, um, at our last council meeting, that we are very open to discussion that will lead to some kind of meaningful change, should that be necessary. I, um, I've been spending a lot of time on the can'twait.org website and I've been spending even more time looking at our police policy manual, which is a tome, uh, but it's a good tome in another itself. And I believe, and I don't have all of the information yet, but I believe that of the eight can't wait items, um, very easily off the top of my head, I see anywhere from six to seven of those items that our police department is requiring of all of our sworn officers. And I believe the chief even mentioned at the previous meeting, not only do our sworn officers get regular de-escalation training, just as an example, all of our dispatchers get it as well. And they are a critical source because when those nine-one-one calls come in, they're the ones that are fielding them and they're the ones that are making some, uh, judgment on the condition of an individual. So, you know, I really, I really feel that, and I don't mean this with any kind of disrespect to anybody out there, but I feel that this budget can and should move forward as has been proposed tonight. And in our discussions, and this is, this discussion next month is maybe the first of several. We don't know, obviously. Um, but certainly it's a starting point and it's going to be very open. We're going to hear from everybody there. Um, I mean, it'll be virtual again, I'm sure at that point in time. So again, I just, I feel very comfortable, um, in moving forward and adopting this budget as is. But at the same time, I hear, I hear everybody saying, well, there's too much money in this pot and maybe it should go over into this pot. And I think that's something we can talk about, but, um, I don't believe that that is a very thought-out process at this point in time. Those are my comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, it looks like this, that's everybody from the council's verse is, uh, wrapping up and, uh, final comments on item. And, uh, I, I won't belabor anything, but I, I definitely agree. Um, I'm heartened to see so many citizens, um, taking place, uh, kind of taking part, taking part of the conversation and also, um, hope that they continue in the well to, um, stay involved and, uh, had folks reach out to me as well, instead of trying to work around my full-time work, uh, schedule, uh, to try to get together with folks. But, uh, look forward as well to the, um, July twenty-second meeting, um, so that we can delve more deeply into this. Um, and I'm glad as well that people have commented that, you know, really the budget is a, a living, breathing document that can be, um, returned to if necessary. So, um, with that, I will turn it back to council. I see, um, Councilmember Delosso, you have your hand up. Did you have another comment or did you want to?
Um, I would be ready to make a motion if there's no further comments from my colleagues.
Um, let me check with Councilmember Harvey. I saw her hand just go up. Wanted to make sure. Whether, did you have any further comments, Councilmember Harvey here?
No, go ahead. I, that, that's fine.
Okay. So back to you, Councilmember Delosso.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution approving the City of Cattati budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
This is Councilmember Lappin. I'd be happy to second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Can we please get a roll call vote on item eleven A?
Councilmember Delosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamond?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
I would be an affirmative on there, but I would also comment that my approval is also with the contingency that the budget can be amended as needed down the road. So yes.
Mayor Stillman? Yes. Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll move on to item twelve, which is our city manager's report. So for that, I will turn over to Damian Obed.
Thank you, Mayor, um, members of the council. So, um, uh, first off, just to kind of save everyone the email, um, exchange, there was a question earlier about landscape and lighting assessment districts and Materi Circle. And Materi Circle is not within a lighting and landscape assessment district. I believe the landscaping there is maintained by their, um, homeowners association. So, um, anyway, for, if that, if that saves a, a couple of emails back and forth, I'd rather throw that out there upfront. Also, um, thank you for, uh, mentioning, Mayor, that the, that the, uh, community discussion around, um, our policies is, is being planned for July twenty-second at six P M. And so we hope to see everyone there. You should see announcements, um, on that coming out here very shortly. So, um, COVID, last Thursday, the health officer revised the health order, as I think everyone knows. And, um, this health order aligned with the state across essentially all allowed business activities. So, um, at this time, the only activities not allowed in some mitigated fashion are basically playgrounds and group picnic areas. So like individuals and households can have picnics, but general group picnic areas are not permissible. Um, indoor rinks, roller rinks, playgrounds, bounce centers, ball pits, laser tag, um, not allowed yet. Saunas and steam rooms, not a good idea, also not allowed. Um, higher education in person. Um, so they're going, I guess, fully virtual at this point. And then, um, generally, a whole list of different types of public events and gatherings. Um, and for Sonoma County and actually many of the counties, they set the limit at twelve people. So, um, you know, these are everything from concerts to, you know, live sporting events, conventions, all that kind of stuff. So, so that's essentially the short list of things that are, that are currently not allowed. Um, and, um, because we're at a point now where, where most things are allowed in some mitigated fashion, um, it's, it's even more important than ever to keep, um, to keep all of us healthy and to keep our businesses open, to, um, really push out the message, and we are doing that on our social media, that, um, everyone needs to follow the, the simple threes, which is face covering, social distancing, and frequent hand washing. Um, because without those, without those, then we could be back in, um, in lockdown again. So, um, you'd be, there is messaging out even today and, uh, we'll continue to do that to try to reinforce that message with the community. Um, a reminder, this is our last meeting before the Fourth of July. And so, um, that, uh, that week, that weekend typically entails a lot of fireworks and they are all illegal in Cattati. And you'll be seeing some messaging on social media about that as well. Um, I wanted to also let the council and community know that the police department received an Office of Traffic Safety grant on special enforcement for impaired driving and other contributing factors to accidents. And so our motor officer, um, Officer Ranky is officially certified as our motor officer. Now he's on, um, a motor, motor bike. And, um, that enables him to, uh, to, uh, do traffic enforcement in areas that it just isn't as easy to do in a squad car. Um, on the construction side of things, we have a lot going on. Um, the William Olaf Street Sewer Project replacement is starting on Monday, July sixth, with completion expected in early August. Um, the twenty-twenty-one Streets project that I had mentioned earlier in this, um, council meeting is expected to be put to bid, um, right around July fourth, and then bids are set to open at the end of July. And, um, the areas, as I mentioned, are the name streets as well as part of Alapariza. And, um, whether, uh, you know, by the time, by the time we come back to, uh, council in either late July or early August with the bid results, um, we'll also have some updated revenue, um, revenue actuals, and we'll have a, um, I think we'll be in a much better place to, uh, make a recommendation on whether it's a good time to report on that or not. Uh, the Wayfinding Project is moving along on schedule. And so the signs, um, should be delivered here any day now. And, um, the bollards will be, these are for the Creek Trails, will be on site right around the Fourth of July weekend as well. And installations are going to start after the Fourth of July weekend along the Creek Trail. And, um, we expect it to be basically, uh, July first. Now, these are, um, these are all the way finding signs except for the, um, like the Monument Kiosk signs in downtown and, um, like the Park Monument signs. That's part of Phase Two, which is now the budget. The West School Street pathway is expected to get off, um, to a quick start with construction, um, given the approval tonight. So it, it will begin in late July and, um, wrap up in mid to late August. Notices will be going out to residents in the area, letting them know if the, um, construction start. The Felity Ranch improvements are expected to be substantially complete by the end of July. Um, outdoor improvements coming soon that you'll notice on the ranch are, um, widening the driveway and reconfiguring the internal fencing to make it more usable, um, a more usable space for the animals in the garden area and, um, for community education. Uh, PSPS. So we are starting, starting our preparations for, um, the PSPS season, which, given the low amount of rainfall and the hot days, the expectation is, um, you know, we could be seeing stuff in this regard sooner than we did last year. So we're starting preparations already for that. Um, some things, one of the things I will just, um, say, there was a budget discussion about the generator. And so that's, um, that's related to the City Hall generator and it's not a, it's not a new generator. It's really, um, just correcting some deficiencies we discovered in the last PSPS events where we had to, um, do some quick rewiring of things, um, when the backup generator came on to keep things rolling. And, um, we're just correcting some of those electrical deficiencies so that, uh, uh, so that when the generator kicks on, everything that we need to have it power will power. And, um, and I do agree that it would be awesome to have, uh, solar with battery. Um, and, you know, maybe down the road when we get, um, we get to, uh, we have that roof replaced at the Civic Center, then that entire roof would be structurally able to actually handle solar panels as opposed to the small area that currently, um, can support them. And, um, and we are working with Sonoma Plain Power to, um, do a solar assessment of our City Hall complexes and sort of working on that, right, as well. So that may not be, um, you know, maybe a year or two down the road. Um, anyway, so with, uh, with the other elements of our PSPS preparations is we're, um, we bought all the reflective backing for our traffic signal light heads and, um, we'll be installing them here shortly. Those are, um, those are for at nighttime when the traffic signals go dark because there's no power and the battery pack explodes out. The reflective tape that's on the signal shroud is, um, is something that reflects headlights so people can see that they're approaching the intersection at night. Um, we also have gotten some new equipment in. Um, we have, uh, a new, uh, portable generator for the lift states, the sewer lift station. And that will be here soon, as well as a towable, um, fueling tank for the generators, um, which we rented last year during the PSPS event. Um, it turned, it, uh, turned out to be invaluable not only for the city, but we also were helping Rancho Adobe Fire District out with their backup generator and their downtown proquitation. Um, the P G E permit for work in Frontal Plaza has been issued. Work expect, is expected in the first week of July and extends literally to August. And then the, um, City's Water Quality Report, this is the, um, annual assessment of all of the water quality testing on our distribution and source waters is, um, complete and is being sent to all customers this month. And, um, the water continues to meet, of course, all federal and state water quality requirements and it's safe and reliable and unaffected by, uh, the COVID endemic that's, um, that we're in the middle of right now. On the recreation side, um, this is the third week of summer camp in Cattati and we're offering the improv camp and it's sold out Camp Cattati. So our, um, our, our city summer camp is sold out for the rest of the summer already. And, um, at the end of the week, the improv camp will perform in the Cattati room to a virtual crowd via Zoom. Um, so all the parents and relatives can watch without having to physically be together. So that's just our new reality. And then, um, we will continue to host Camp Cattati, uh, through the first week of August. And, um, you may have seen on social media last week, the campers held a lemonade stand fundraiser for a children's hospital. And they were managed, they managed to collect over a hundred and thirty dollars in donations for that and, um, sent it with some, uh, Gatwell cards to a, um, to a local hospital. And we're excited to continue to work with our campers on helping the community with similar projects throughout the summer. And then, um, later in the summer, we have the gymnastics camp as well as, uh, there's still space to sign up. Um, I'm sorry, there's still space to sign up for that gymnastics camp. And all these camps, the ones I previously mentioned as well as the gymnastics camps are, are following the CDC guidelines regarding COVID nineteen. Um, have been uniformly grateful for a safe and fun place to spend. Um, Farmer's Market season continues to take place each Wednesday afternoon in Frontal Plaza Park, four-thirty to seven-thirty. And there's multiple fresh fruit and vegetable vendors, hot food options, handmade goods and more. And the, the market will continue to operate through the end of August. And, um, I certainly can attest to some of the fruit being very good right now. And it's, um, it's all coming into season. So it's, nothing beats, nothing beats fresh fruit. And then, um, uh, finally, also continuing through the summer is the Redwood Empire Food Bank Summer Lunch Program at the Ray Miller Community Center behind City Hall. So each, um, I've mentioned this before, but each weekday throughout the summer, anyone age eighteen or under can come pick up a grab and go lunch between noon and twelve-thirty. There's no paperwork or R S V P required. So you can sign up for all of our camps on our city website, or if you have, um, other questions or needing more information, you always can contact Ashley Wilson at six six five four two 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 or awilson@catatacy.org, or simply follow our social media platforms for the latest information. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that report out. And, um, I'll bring it back to council, see if anybody has any questions for our city manager at this point. All right. I'm not seeing any hands flying up, so thank you very much for that. Um, and we'll move on to public comment on non-action agenda items. And so I will turn it back to, um, our city clerk to check in with the attendees. Thank you. Mayor Stillman, uh, I actually see Councilmember Harvey. Go ahead.
Um, did we skip over city council member reports?
No, I believe we put a bill on that. Um, you know what? I'm very sorry. I did skip that. So, uh, yes. So let me rewind. Apologies to, uh, members of the public. Um, first, let's go to city council member reports. Um, first, let's go to city council member reports. And so, uh, let me check, uh, Councilmember Harvey, did you have anything to report out?
I do indeed.
Excellent.
So I will start, um, attended the North Bay Executive Committee Zoom meeting. As I stated, um, earlier, it was very informative about all that's going on with COVID and budgets and protests and things with, um, a lot of the Bay Area communities. Some are having some really dire straits. And some communities are having, um, some issues with, um, protesting and some really destructive behavior. So we want to appreciate, um, the folks that we have had, um, that have done protesting and that they have been very peaceful. So, um, I appreciate that. So that was good update. And then I attended the, um, ABAC General Assembly Meeting and that meeting was to, uh, there was a hundred and twenty-seven participants on that meeting. So it was a very interesting and lively meeting. Um, it was to approve the budget. And there was, I, I can't even tell you how many. I want to say probably forty people commented on the budget. Um, basically, um, they were going to raise everybody's dues, um, for that. And people were asking, you know, could they reassess that given the situation that many cities are in? They, um, they said no, their budget was their budget and people did not, um, take very kindly to that, let's say, a good way of putting it. So, um, they didn't really listen to that. So it was one of the, usually the budgets get, uh, approved pretty, um, quickly, but this one actually had about a third of the members, um, voting no on the budget. And I just, I, I voted no because it was disturbing to me that after all the comments, that there wasn't even a consideration to look at cutting anything. And for some of these cities, um, it's a big deal. So, um, I, I heard mention of some cities, you know, maybe even having to consider, you know, dropping their membership, um, because of it. But, so anyways, it passed anyways because there were two-thirds of the people voting. Then lastly, I attended the Santa Rosa Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting. Um, real good update, um, making really good progress on, um, the plan. So there was an update on information on the plan. So we are progressing. It's been difficult for the group to, um, kind of move things forward with COVID-19, but they've managed to, um, do that. Uh, some of the folks have been, um, being pulled away, um, on, uh, the emergency center and things like that, but they've been able to keep it marching forward. So we're still on schedule with that. What did slip a little bit is the, um, well registration, um, because of COVID-19. That is probably not going to get rolled out until later in the summer, maybe August, August, September, October-ish. So I was a little bit of a disappointment because it, it's going to take quite some time to get all of those, uh, registrations done. But it is what it is and that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you for the report out and, um, I'll check in, uh, Councilmember Lamond, do you have anything that you had to report out this meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Stillman, nothing tonight.
Okay, great. Um, and I'll check in, uh, Councilmember Delosso, did you have anything to report out?
Thank you, Mayor, but, uh, I have nothing to report out this evening.
Okay, great. And I'll check with, uh, Vice Mayor Moore.
I also have nothing to report out this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and with keeping with that trend, I also have nothing to report out. Um, we have not had any library advisory board meetings, um, remotely yet. So still waiting for that to kick back into gear. Okay, now that I'm on the correct page and have stopped checking things off in advance of actually getting to them on the budget, or on the agenda, um, we will now move to agenda item number 14, uh, public comment on non-action agenda items. For that, I'll turn it over again to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Stillman. Just as a reminder to our attendees, to use your raise an icon or dial star nine from your telephone. And I see no hands raised, Mayor Stillman.
Okay, thank you for that. And, uh, so we will move on past item number 14, uh, for item number 15, uh, checking with the, our city clerk, was there any information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further than the email from today.
Okay, great. Well, with that, I'll take one last look at the council members and staff. Not seeing any hands flying up. So I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at nine, or 9:33 PM. Thank you very much. Everybody have a good safety evening and a good week ahead.
You too.